Jerry should be here soon. I was, I've been working with him on Slack this morning, so I'm sure he's gonna be here any second.
Danny, did you see my email?
Um, let me see. The past one?
Mm-hmm.
I haven't read it yet, but I'll read it right now.
Oh, I guess I never sent this one last night. I just had it in my drafts. Okay. So I've got like two now.
Uh, we'll tweak that, we'll tweak it a little bit. It's uh, it's, it reads as a, as chat GPT.
Okay.
Did you send that to John by chance?
I did not. I wanted to get your input before.
Okay.
End up.
Cool.
See if it, like, the general messaging was okay first.
Let me show you. I'm gonna send the one that, that we're using of Johns that, uh, for something else that might tie in better.
Okay.
Alright, I am going to, let's go ahead and get this started. Still no Jerry? Hit him up real quick. He's on his way. Alright, Amit, go ahead and start us off.
Uh, yes, John. So today first I work on, John, you sent a message inside Slack group so duplicate, uh, it will send card by showing duplicate. So I found the reason what is happening there. Uh, let me see my screen. Is John there? And smell was.
I'm here.
Yep. So, oh, I wonder then what is happening? Uh, front end app is sending here, activity filter friends also, and back end is also sending pal. So we are getting two, one activity type is PL and other is a friend. But that's why we are getting two cards. So we need to do one.
I mean, that doesn't, doesn't happen every time. So why does it happen on the example?
I think it will happen every time. Can I please check?
I know that it doesn't.
Hmm, see, then Jerry can say it's, so what is happening now? We are back end extending PL in activity filter and app is sending friend. So it is returning back in the database returning to, in uh, to activity. PL and friend. So I, I don't know what is PL, pal, friend.
Pal is short for friend.
Hmm.
But I don't know why. Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Yeah, so it looks like that we're inserting that record into the database. I, I don't know the difference between a pal card and a friend card.
Yeah, I also don't know this pal. And since Eric, something they work on this pal thing.
I think this probably has something to do with going back to, there was some challenge of what perspective to show it, um, whether it was the person who followed back or the person who got followed back.
That's what I can, I can see here is that they're inverse of each other.
Yeah. But of course it shouldn't duplicate on anybody's feed and it doesn't normally. There would be duplicates everywhere. So I don't understand how this one duplicated.
It's possible that did, um, so for those two cards, Amit,
Hmm.
what the, what does the data look like in the, uh, the post table?
Uh, post, it is from the post table itself. You can see my screen here.
Yeah, wha- what's the raw data? What do, what do those two records look like? So?
Uh, two records look like, links is now, we see here the two records from the post table.
Right, but this is from the UD app.
Yeah, let's go to the post table one minute. Um. What post? We have any post key?
Uh.
Yeah, post to user.
Well, we have the timestamp.
Yes, we have timestamp, there are timestamps also, uh, same, uh, like you can see here.
Well, it's, it's. Hmm, it's four seconds off. Well, no, not four seconds, sorry. It's like fifteen seconds. So, yeah, wh- why would it be fifteen seconds apart?
It couldn't be because, you know, there's not the optimistic response on some buttons.
That's almost, I'm thinking is that like it gave him a, like he tapped it twice for some reason.
Yeah, can we, well, first we need optimistic response, but maybe first actually before that, can we have some kind of circuit breaker that doesn't duplicate two cards?
Um, yeah, well, we have to figure out, I guess, the, um, like a, a, a rate limit, like, what? Figure out the ideal, so maybe we don't allow, hmm. Where, it's like where, where do we cut the circuit? If it sounds like that he's trying to follow the user twice. So I'm going to assume that if we can tell that they are already following them, we just, we just cut it there, which, sure, um. This is possible. Let's see, follow key. No, it looks like that there, they would have short circuited. It's almost like, Amit, maybe try to like, tap the button multiple times from the app and see what happens there.
Okay.
Like, like try to follow and follow somebody. Well, let me also, let, yeah, see, I keep getting spam notifications too.
Hmm.
When you're doing that, spamming notifications.
Okay.
So, yeah, let's, let's do a circuit breaker on that one too. Whatever we can do to,
Yes.
prevent multiples.
Yeah, um. Might have to, ooh. Maybe. Maybe we can only get, allow one notification. I'm trying to think. Um, I might have to update the trigger to not notify on, on other times, like repeated follow-ups, repeat, repeated follows. Okay, so. Amit, I had to add you as a friend for this to really work.
Hmm. So I can see that card. And followed you back. I got second notice, third notification, followed you back.
Let's be, yeah, and it's gonna create, it's creating multiple cards when we do that, so. Uh, whenever you unfollow somebody, we, should we delete the card, the friendship card, John?
Um. Hmm.
Cause it will make duplicate cards.
Yeah, I mean, maybe like after a few seconds, cause like you might press the button and go, oops. Um.
That's fine, we'll just remake it then. Just there, only if you want instance of the friendship card is what I'm saying.
I see. So like I might have one from a month ago, that would get deleted and then I'd have a new one today.
Right, because right now we can create two separate ones.
Yeah, I mean, in a perfect world, that wouldn't happen. It just wouldn't delete the old one. Because technically I made a mistake. I didn't mean to unfollow. And then it looks like I just now became friends with you, even though it was a month ago.
I see, um. Okay, um. Okay, um, we can do that.
Okay, um, what about the notifications?
I'll have to probably add a, um, I'll probably have to add a, a filter in the return for do notify. Like in the trigger emit, I'll have to update the trigger. On whether or not we wanna send that notification, so like add do notify to it.
Yes. Or here, like, let me check which field it is I'm checking, more than Jerry. And then, listen. And then notification here, user, so data type friend and data dot alert is equal to follow. So like, uh, here, the second time, don't send that alert follow. I think, yeah. Or friend, something. Like here, we are checking once in notification Jerry. Alert, we are checking alert type. If it's a friend or follow.
So send it as null if.
Yes, yes, second time. Send that signal.
Okay. Let me try this on QA, um.
And, uh, uh, can it say another things also?
What's that?
Another thing also, like, can I see update, another update also?
Yeah, yeah, go on.
Okay, so Jerry, second thing I also work on, like, uh, it was sending, uh, uh, favorite duplicate notification, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I checked it, like I hit the API several times, I unlocked the response. I did, every time I'm getting the same, uh, response from a database, so I'm not able to segregate, it's already sent or something.
What do you mean, what do you mean you're not able to see if it's already saved?
Proceed here, you can see my response, user favorite.
Uh-huh.
So you can see it is same, uh, second time I also hit with the same profile. So I'm getting the same response, second time also.
Maybe, maybe we should just see if the user is already favored at the profile. Maybe we should just do a check beforehand.
Hmm, yep, then we, like, like I yesterday, I told you, we need to do one extra DB call since I'm not getting here.
Okay.
Anything, so I can, uh, handle it. So I will do one extra DB call here.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, that's to prevent a duplicate favorite or what was?
Correct. Duplicate.
I see. Okay, good, good, okay.
Okay, and, and third thing, I'm running, uh, this, uh, hmm, circles body on QA. Currently.
Yeah, did you already run the script?
Yeah, I run it, it's not completed whole since we have twelve thousand users, so, yeah, it's not completed, I will let you know once it's completed.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Hmm, okay, um. I didn't catch the last part. Can I, can I see the circles buddy now from a existing account?
Sorry, John?
Would, uh, an existing user account in QA see the circle?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. So that means all, all users now would have it?
All users will now have it, so once I will finish, I will let you know, so all user can check.
Okay, so you're gonna let me know when you finish?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks a lot. Okay.
Amit, you wanna try, um, doing the, the follow, unfollow real quick with me and see if.
Yep.
That works. I'm passing null for the notify type now.
Get one. Jerry. Thanks. Follow back. Thanks. Follow back. Friends. Follow back. So are you getting notification?
I'm not getting, I'm not getting anything, um, so let me do this real quick, so. Alright, uh, turn on it. Let's try to follow.
Yep. It's showing friends currently.
Oh, unfollow me first?
Hmm. Yep, I'm followed you, following you back.
Yes.
Yes, did you receive it?
There we go. I got it. And then try it again.
I followed you. Following you back. Did you receive it?
Nope.
Yep, then, yeah. There's what, doing again. Yep. Followed you back.
Cool, okay, sounds, it looks like it worked.
Okay, so, so it'll still leave the old card if someone accidentally unfollows? Or you still work?
Well, uh, we have to, I have to add a control to not, uh, we should probably have some kind of delay. With creating cards, if we wanna create duplicate cards. Is that, you would like to create duplicate cards?
No, I don't want duplicate cards.
So you only want the first card to show?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but unless, I don't know, like weeks, weeks go by, that's something different, you know, um. So I would say, yeah, maybe like.
What's, what's the?
A ten second delay.
Okay, so ten second delay.
Yeah. So if someone follows or, uh, say, uh, unfollows and then follows back within ten seconds, nothing changes, right?
Okay.
Let's see.
Let's see. Alright, so ten seconds is the cool off. That's kind of aggressive, don't you think, ten?
You prefer longer?
Why not like a day?
Um. I don't know, I can imagine a boyfriend and a girlfriend arguing and then changing their mind within a few minutes.
Okay, then you do like, yes.
Um. Um.
Cause again, this, I think this can show anybody's feed who has them as friends, so if they, they go at it, do we really wanna show that?
Well, we wouldn't show it if they change their mind, right?
Yeah, but like ten seconds, so they could be like, you know, ten, every ten seconds they could do this.
Mm-hmm.
You can, that, that means six in one minute.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I mean, how about, let's go, let's go thirty seconds.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Uh, alright, so let me go to, let me go to Ismail and I'm going to unfollow, follow, unfollow, follow, unfollow, follow. Let's see what that does. Okay, I created three cards. Let's see why.
Okay, while, while you're doing that, let me, um, let me go to Ismail.
Mm-hmm.
His update. Hey, Ismail.
Hey. Um, okay, so yesterday I, um, we mentioned I was kind of working on the bug in chat. I unfortunately couldn't reproduce it, so kept trying. Didn't find a way to reproduce it, but I did update the library as I mentioned and I, it was working well with the app and it did fix one of the problems that had to do with state, so. Fingers crossed, it probably would have also fixed this one. Um, we need to keep an eye out, so. We just keep using it, keep testing it. If it happens again, let me know, we'll take another look at it, um. Yeah, being said, after, you know, spending some time on that, I switched over to removing odd pretty much, uh, well, input in the app except chat. Cause, uh, if I remember correctly, yesterday we agreed that we're pretty much looking for video games, movies, shows, people. And all those don't really need auto correction. Uh, so that shouldn't be a problem anymore. Got that merged in. Um, afterward, after that, I switched gear to chat pagination, or not chat topic, chat topics pagination. Um. So. It, one of the main challenges I have, I saw there was if we're paginating, so like, let's say we load the first twenty-five and then we add a topic and we paginate again. So the offset is gonna be twenty-five. Because that's what we're going by at twenty-fives, but we actually added a new new topic to the group, so that twenty-five, like I say, you add the one, one topic, there's gonna be overlap. It's, 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 cause like that topic that you added is gonna be at the beginning of the array now, and so you're gonna have a duplicate topic in the array. And if you add two topics, you're gonna add two topics, cause we're still fixing the first or the second twenty-five.
I see. Is that what was causing, is that what was causing the problem the first time around?
Well, yes, no, that, that was a problem. So the first time I went out, uh, it was a little different, um. Uh, I still haven't got a pagination figured out all the way, so the way I'm doing it now is I'm paginating through pressing a button. Um, so like, let's say maybe a more button or like see more, see all, or, you know, just, I guess, see more. Like I just have it there as a dummy. I'm testing that theory out. Because, uh, I don't want to automatically pageinate, uh, cause I wanna see exactly what's happening and when things are happening. Um, so I noticed that when I am doing that pagination with the button, I don't see any of the side effects, except one, which was the one I just mentioned. Um, which I fixed. Um, actually, what I ended up doing is, well, first of all, I, I spent some time trying to fix this. I was like, okay, maybe I have a, I tweaked the offset based off of if we add topics and keep track of how many topics we added, then I learned that we can add topics from different places and it, just, it got nasty quick. So what I ended up doing was filtering, like, just keeping the fetch as is, just filtering it on the, before I add it to the cache, I look for duplicates and like I compared them both arrays. If there's any duplicates, I would manually remove it and then I add it to the cache. Um, that way, there's no duplicates in the array and you're gonna have two topics, same name, same key, which could cause problems. And the user doesn't want to see two topics, obviously, that's safe, that's be confusing. Um, so hmm, after I did that pagination, right now it's technically working, right? But it is working with a button press. Um, so that means it's still not automatically working, like you just don't reach the end and then boom. Um, you, you load more, which I was thinking about it, um. I am gonna try to get it to work automatically, but with the button press.
A button like see more or see all or something?
Yeah, it's not gonna be all, cause we're not gonna load them all at once, unless you, the user wants to wait. But, but more maybe or something, or maybe, I'm just saying, maybe, like, one of the benefits I saw for that is when you add a new topic, it does get added to the end and only if you click more, it will get more, instead of automatically loading it and putting it in the middle as. Because when you reach the end, it would automatically do that.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know how practical it is to have like a button that says more. Um. You know what I mean?
Paging would be better.
Yeah, so if we still wanna go to pagination, where it just does it, well, they're both pagination, just one is automatic when you reach the end of their list and one is manual.
True.
So if we still want it automatic, um, I just need to kind of see what other bugs can potentially happen.
Hmm.
But I made good progress in terms of, um, fixing some cache issues, um. The, uh, let me see, what was I gonna say? There was something, um. There's some concern I had. Oh man, I just, I had the thought slip on my head, um.
Hmm.
Hmm, was it about pagination? Uh, let me see here. Yeah, honestly, I forgot what it was. Um, let's see if it comes back to me a little bit. Um. But yeah, that, that's basically what I was busy with yesterday, so right now I'm gonna try to get that automatic pagination. Oh yeah, I remember. Uh, we could, uh, we could have fetched forty, like, you know how we fetch twenty-five at a time? When I fetch forty, that causes a lot of problems, like cache problems. Um, I didn't look too much into it. I just switched it back to twenty-five. Uh, it causes a lot of problems, yeah, in terms of, um. Let me see here, in terms of like when you add topics, it, it wasn't adding up properly. Uh, when you leave, it wasn't, it wa- it wasn't updating the cache properly. I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I see.
When I had forty, now, this probably can be fixed, I just need, I guess I needed to spend more time on it, which, um, I ended up kind of spending all my time fixing the pagination. But yeah, that was one thing. I, I had to switch it back to twenty-five until I see why.
Well, twenty-five is fine, especially, I mean, if there's pagination. So I would say.
Yeah, after that pagination, it's, it's, it's twenty-five is preferred over forty, but if, but I wanted to have forty-four, if we might have a build without pagination for production.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do the twenty-five and the button to paginate more for now?
Um, yeah.
And then just keep working on the automatic pagination?
Yeah, I mean, if I can get that working today, like the automatic pagination plus the handling all the edge cases, I don't, I'll just have that. If it's, if it's gonna, if it's for whatever reason, I don't want it to like some challenges and it still needs a lot more work. Hmm, how that would look, just like a little more button at the end or?
I don't know, maybe more inside of a circle. Um, how about show, show more?
Yeah.
Or more topics?
Okay, well, yeah, well.
Show, show more is easier to, to.
I'll do this. If I, if, if, if I find that automatic pagination has some problems, I'll reach out for show more. Um, design, like a button or something, if I don't need it, I don't wanna waste your time with it. So I'll know by within a few. So I'll know by within a few hours here.
Okay, cool. Um, yeah, cause I, I would, I would like to try and get the. Updated production build out, released because there is still those couple bugs you fixed like a week ago. Like you know how if you scrolled and um, the chat paginated improperly, it would show like a duplicate page? It's still doing that, um, because the, the fix isn't released yet. And it's a couple things.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, worst case scenario, we just release it with twenty, where it has twenty five. So the topics don't change. That's worst case scenario.
Yeah.
You wanna have.
Are you saying it's working, it's working with the more button?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, I've, I've done a lot of tests again. I just, I didn't see any. Like I saw one edge case which I handled. I didn't see any other edge cases. It obviously still needs tested, so I don't wanna say, yeah, it's, it's ready to go for production. I. But I will say personally, I do my tests, I didn't see anything.
Okay, okay, cool. Um, okay, so, alright, one way or another, let's, let's try and aim today. Towards a production build that we could release. Um, there's, I know Amin's done some fixes, you've done some fixes, Wells back today and I, um, I wanna see where he's at with his. Um, there was a couple things still. Uh, pending, so we'll try and get it all in. Did you have any more to add at the moment?
Um, no, well, after pagination or this bug, I'm gonna try to get that production build out and after that, we can go back to. Chat replies or if there's anything else pending.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, then let's uh, thank you, let's continue. Um. Amin, how are you doing? Did you ever uh, get to the bottom of that navigation issue?
Yeah, um, that was fixed yesterday.
Um, that's great.
Yeah, I did fix it. Um, it's, it's merged, was reviewed and merged. Also worked on the um. The universal links inside the chat. So if someone pressed on a universal link, if someone shared that universal link inside chat, normally will like take the user out of the. App to, it opens Safari, but now it just, it will just, we're there to the, the user. Wherever that universal link uh, is supposed to take the user to uh, to stay with the podcasts. And it works and if you use a door, go back, it takes the user back to, to the chat. And yeah, that's also merged, uh, reviewed and merged and um. Worked on the, that new lock you sent me. Um, it's all there. It's just one thing that it's missing. It's like that, like the click through circle, that's, that's.
Yeah. Um. I had it remade, so yeah, I'm gonna send it to you. Will, will you try this one?
Yeah.
Okay. He uh, said he thinks he fixed it, so just let me know if this one works.
See, fine. Um, so yeah, that was uh, my day yesterday.
Okay, um. I haven't mentioned it, but I wanna test here pretty soon. Todd has. Couple test phones that we can use that have brand new, like nobody's ever installed circles on them. And I, I wanna confirm for sure, for sure. It's Todd here. Yeah, um, what's up? Hey, um, I, I wanna confirm today something I'm seeing and I mean, if it's. Confirmed, I wanna look into why. I have not seen. In any session replays. Or on my, any of my test phones, I've not seen the first favorite flow. So I don't know, yeah, maybe it's not getting triggered. So you know the one Todd where it says your friends wanna see your favorites and there's a button says show me now? Yeah, so I wanna record an onboarding on one of those phones, uh, you know, new user account. And it should uh, it should trigger after, there's some time delays and some, but you have to like navigate a few times, but.
I don't think there's a time delay more of like there is um, like the buttons than the count of pressing of the map buttons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, is there, have you been seeing it, I mean?
Uh, no, because it should be, you only seen it once and I don't like to delete the app often. So I can try now and go and see.
And you also, you wouldn't see it if you have a favorite, right? Is that part of the rules?
Yep, true, that's, that's that, yeah.
Okay, so that's why one of these brand new accounts, Todd, will be.
Okay, no problem.
The best uh, test.
Yep, I'll get that this afternoon, no problem.
Cool, cool. Um, yeah, just record everything as you're doing it. Um. And on one of those, let's, so let's, let's just plan it out now. So on, on the first one you do. Um, let's have you, I mean, let's have, let's have Todd test a universal link also or dynamic link or. Um, would, what would be a good test for something very new in our universal links world?
We have podcasts that we just added, like uh, episodes.
Podcast, okay, perfect. Um, Jerry, could you create? A link for Todd to test with that, you know, should be like a shared link for, for a podcast. But onboard with it, let's make sure that link works and same time we'll also. Test other stuff as a new user.
You wanna pass link like a, like an episode link? Yeah, I, I got, I got some links.
I got links, you got links, I got them.
Yeah. I got links, I got them.
Sounds good. I want some links. Now, this will be the latest QA build, is that, does it have what we need in it, I mean?
Um, the pa- yeah, the podcast, episodes, uh, you know, so they're working on the latest Q and A.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, um. Yeah, so Jerry, why don't you share a link with Todd and Todd, you should give Jerry the phone number for. One of your, your test phones there, I want you Slack.
And what am I doing? What am I doing? This test phone? I just sent him a link, but.
Yeah, he's probably, um. Yeah, send it to his test.
I, I don't have one of the test phones on me, but if you wanna, can I just um, have Jerry Slack it to me and then I can. Message it from my personal phone to. The uh, test phone, when I have it.
Yeah, um, would it be better from? One account to another account? Maybe that's even better test? Jerry, like if you sent it from your. Your uh, phone. To his, his test phone?
Oh, he's gonna like come into the app from a.
Yes, brand new users, brand new phone, clean, clean slate.
It doesn't matter where it's like the link from, does it? As long as whether he sends it directly to the phone via SMS or Slack.
Shouldn't matter, but.
Or I send it.
I like to keep it just like totally. Um, confined exactly how it would be between two users.
Okay, for this podcast link now, I did not, I just worked on the functionality of the page. I don't have where it gives the invite credit right now.
Okay, I see. Um, okay, we won't, we won't count that. Well, but the rest of the test should, should work out, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Link to a podcast and if he clicks uh, like checkout more rad radio. That would send him to the app store, but what he'd have to do is he'd have to leave the app store and. Going through circles. He'd have to download circles from Test Flight.
That's what, oh yeah, cause it is test.
I need Test Flight on the new, so I need Test Flight on the new phones?
Yes.
Okay, what um, what do you need Jerry? Uh, from these test phones to get them on? Um, Test Flight, do you just need the email addresses or Apple IDs?
Danny can help you with that. Yeah. So Danny, will you get it? You, you don't have to get them all on Test Flight, but get a couple of them on.
Okay. Jerry, I'm gonna send you uh, one of the phone numbers actually from a test phone, so you can just send the link directly to it.
Oh, you want me to text it to you? Okay.
Well, however, John's describing as far as.
I'd like you to generate it from the app, Jerry, and send it, you know, like a, another user, just like, I wanna go end to end to, from two users. As accurate as we can get. I see, so if I go and I search entertainment, I go to podcast and I go here.
And you slap it, Jerry?
Yeah, entertainment podcast, if I wanna go play. An episode. Then share and then messages. If I go send this to. Seven, okay, two seven nine nine, six, six, seven. Uh, six, seven, one, six, this.
This has a body that says, share circles with all your friends and family.
Yeah, that, that's the um, that generic one that I wanna replace. So.
Yeah, so you wanna replace with what?
Something more like the ones we're using. Um, now in this case, is this? Can this be tailored because it is sharing a known profile like a podcast? We know we're sharing a podcast?
Yeah, should.
Okay, so we can tailor it to that, so, um.
So there's one thing as well, so whenever I share from the app. I, I don't see the preview image, but Todd, do you see the preview image in your phone?
Uh, oh, I don't have this physical phone on me.
Uh, I wanted to see if the first message has the preview image, because there is a preview image. And if I paste that link in iMessage and I send it to you, that same URL, it has the pre, the correct preview image.
And I, okay, I mean, I can give you another one of my, I mean, I do have an iPhone here. It already has circles on it, but it shouldn't matter if I. Received the link, right?
Yeah, so if I, yeah, if I, I move the number to that one and I'll send it.
Yeah. C two, seven. Six, seven, two, eight, five, seven. Seven, Slack to you.
Two, six, eight, two, two, five, seven. Okay. Okay, so I just sent this to you.
Okay.
Do you have a preview image with it?
I mean, before I opened it up, let me. Screen record, just so I have something to.
While we're doing that, um, I mean, did you, in our, if you look at our Slack messages a few days back. There was this card that said shared undefined. Did we already resolve that?
Hmm, hmm, I did not work on it, so share.
Um. Yeah, I can't remember. I think it had to do with the uh. The navigation issue we were having. So maybe, maybe it got resolved when you solved the navigation issue.
Don't, it, I don't think so, like, cause. Those are not like, cause I remember I've seen, I've seen this issue before. I've seen it like uh, often.
Hmm.
So, um, trying to find that screenshot.
It was just about four or five messages back, April eighteenth. Um.
All messages of developments.
Just me and you.
Okay, yeah.
And then I do notice also on the card, it doesn't have like the number of seasons of the show or the. Number of episodes or something like, I guess, like missing a little bit in the card.
Okay, that's like the start combo. You, you got that composed of the start combo.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so that's why I don't think it's a little bit of navigation, it's shared, um. That, and then the find should be like, for example, share the movie. Or whatever the profile type.
Um. Yeah, it should be the profile type, like, so like, yeah, shared a show.
Yeah.
Cause you see, like, if you watch the screen record right above it, it does correct itself when it. Um, shares.
Okay, oh, all right. Yeah, when it's, cause like we, the reason why it says undefined there, because there's a missing data there, so, um. Uh, I'm only, yeah, I'll need to look into why it's undefined in this case.
Okay, take a look and take a look why it's missing the um, other information about the seasons.
Mm hmm.
It should have, let's see. Oh yeah, the streaming service. And then the type, news, and then seasons and the year started, quite a bit missing here.
Okay.
Okay, and then, did you um. Did you test for this, the first favorite flow yet? You're about to do that.
Uh, just this day?
Yeah, I think you, I thought you said you were gonna see if you could trigger it.
Um, I have favorites, uh, it will not trigger for me, right?
Fine, that's okay. We'll, we'll wait for Todd's test phone. Um, okay, so I'll, I'll come back to you.
What, what I just, this, it's the new lock you sent me. I still don't see that, um, that's cool. So I'm not sure what's going on there. And the thing, yeah, when I go up.
It's just, it's how he's making it. I think it's, there's, he added a drop shadow inside of it and that's causing it. Um, I can just let him know, still didn't work.
I just, I don't know, and let him test it on the app, the circles figure out there, maybe there?
Okay, good idea.
If it works there, it's gonna work for us. At least we're gonna know, so.
The thing is, he uses Android, um. Do you know if it is also not working on Android?
Oh, let me test that and see.
Okay.
John, I just got a notification on my phone. I'm sitting here talking to Zane, trying to get this post going out, but you got a podcast coming up.
Yeah, I know, I messaged Troy last night and asked him to reschedule, cause seven o'clock in the morning here.
Okay.
I'm not, even shower and like.
Yeah, I figured. I thought, I think I saw that email.
Yeah, but he hasn't responded, so I feel bad of the guy.
I saw him message into an email a minute ago.
Troy?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
Alright, I'm gonna mute it again.
Okay, cool. Okay, just let me know, I mean, if it's also Android.
Okay.
Alright. I'm gonna let him.
So the preview isn't coming up for me. With that link.
Hmm, um. You wanna show Jerry what you're looking at?
Yeah, I did. I've been, I've been messaging him back and forth, actually. It just, it, it does the same thing. I noticed this before when I've received links like this. Not just from circles, but um, I get the, I get the message and it shows this little box, shows the link and then it shows a box that says, tap to preview.
Yeah, does that turn sometimes to, this IMS, on iPhone, right?
Yeah.
And when you tap to preview, does it preview it?
No.
Oh.
It just, um.
Sound good.
Well, it minimizes back to just a link as it sits there. And then nothing. I mean, I actually clicked the link and it takes me wherever I need to go, but the preview is not showing. I've noticed that if I wait a while. Over time, come back to my messages, the preview will be there.
Yeah, the image, um. The image is solid, it's fifty KB. So I noticed when I send it to Todd through circles. That I do not see the preview in my iMessage. But when I send it to him in iMessage, I have the preview.
Uh.
It's the same exact. Yeah, yeah, when, yeah, I copy pasted and I resend it through iMessage and it has the preview image. I mean, is that something that we could work with on the share drawer maybe? I mean, it's the same, it's the same link.
Um, can you repeat that?
When I share the podcast with Todd, the share image, like the link from the metadata. Does not show iMessage when I share it through circles. But if I copy and paste that link in iMessage and resend it, it has the image, the preview image.
That's all inside uh, in iMessage?
Well, the first time was it was within circles, but that didn't have the preview image, so I tried to resend it. In iMessage and then when I sent it through iMessage, it worked. From my head.
Yeah, because iMessage, they fit in the meta, metadata and they're showing it, but we're not, it's not like a. Uh, seeing the preview image, it's not something automatic that's uh, that you ha- we have to do a setup for it. You have to, yeah, to fish the uh, metadata and show it uh, under the link. You have to, yeah, to fish the metadata and show it on the link. Yeah, we need, we need to fix it. We need to work on it to have it there. Whenever someone share a link. It needs to show on the preview.
And we're saying preview in circles messages or preview in iMessage?
Oh, talking about iMessage, sorry. So we're talking about the share button with. Uh, if I hit share on the podcast episode and I send it to Todd. Who he, I sent it via iMessage to Todd. So I don't send it in circles, but I send it from circles.
Oh, in that case. You're not seeing the iMessage, the metadata that it's expecting it.
Now, but if I take that link and I copy it. Resend it in iMessage, the same link. I get the preview image, or wait, hold on, let's see. Or maybe it doesn't, let's see, why? Oh, maybe this is a different URL. Okay, maybe this is a different one. Why would that be the case? Oh, I am in QA. Let me go in production and see if that changes anything.
And like, um, so when you, you see when you, when you do the share on that podcast, for example. You see like there's like um in the drawer, like they show like the preview and the title.
Yeah, I think I figured it out. Let me, let me see. I forgot I was in QA. So if I go here and entertainment, I go to podcast, good rad radio, we'll share. We share, go open here. And then I go copy, oh. Wait. Oh, but I can't share it. Oh, how, how is this gonna work then? Because I am trying to share in production, but the link doesn't work in. Let me take the link and copy it then and see what I'm sending Todd. It doesn't work. Okay, yes, something is showing an error. Let me, okay, sorry, I made. Oh, I mean. The URL, actually, that's what's going on. The, the URL is undefined. Circles to iMessage? It says.
Screen, trying to do a shuffle.
Oh, I just sent it to you in Slack. Entertainment podcast, not a number, undefined.
Alright, that's from your podcast, like which podcast is?
Uh, Rad Radio. Uh, I'll send you a screen recording.
Okay, um.
So where, where do we leave off?
It looks like the app is constructing the correct URL.
Okay, that's good.
Jaredson's Black, to Amin, there we go, yeah.
On a side note, I don't want to forget this. Sorry to interrupt you. Um, hey, Chantel. Are you there?
Indeed.
Okay, I, I saw a message you had sent somebody, I think it was in the investor chat about how to copy a link. And um. I thought it was um interesting route you took, like you went to the other. Apps button, actually, never, I've never used that and you copied a link from there, but um. It kind of looked like a lot of steps. There's other ways, like you could invite somebody just straight from the pink button. To or the green button, which pulls up SMS. And then there's also, like, you could invite somebody straight to a chat from the.
Well, she was, she was specifically wanting a shareable link to post on Facebook.
That's right. Okay, yeah, true. Good point. Okay, yeah, um, the other way to do it. Depending on if she wanted to bring them into a chat with her, let's say, or a chat in circle, let's say she wanted to bring him into the. The MAGA Army chat, or maybe she wanted to bring them into um one of the others. She could also generate one from there. May- maybe it would be a good. Yeah, just for anybody else that's interested too. Yeah, um. Is that the, because that is the only way to create shareable link?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the other ones are always gonna go to a chat, right? So then.
Yeah.
Okay, I see. So you got it from the other. Which may, maybe we should make it easier. I mean. But think about that too, um. I guess, let's start with the demonstration of just how to bring someone into a chat. And uh. Kind of curious what the feedback is we get from that.
Okay, I think I already did a video of that, but I mean, I could always do another one, yeah. I've done a few little how-to videos and popped them in.
Yeah, those are great, yeah.
Really great if there was like a, a media thing. Oh, you know what? I could create a custom topic. And do how-to videos.
There you go. That's, that's a great idea. Love it. Okay, cool. Alright, sorry um to interrupt Jerry, um but thank you, Chantel. Sure, so Jerry, you were saying?
I gave Amin everything he needed. Uh, we're, we're, we're stuck with sharing the podcast for right now. I, I, I sent all the information to Amin.
Okay, so there does need to be additional front end. Things.
In addition that we want to share that, we want to change that message too, you said, right?
We do, yeah.
To Amin while he's working on it, whatever you want it to be.
Okay. Okay. Let me see what that looks like again. If I recall, it was like a link and then also a text message with it. But even the, didn't the preview image also have text on it? Can't remember now.
Uh, the preview image?
Yeah.
Right now, if you share a podcast, the preview image is the image for that podcast.
Okay, let me see.
So if you send like rad radio, it's the rad logo.
Okay, so when I went to share it with you in Slack, it's just like it's circles dot com is the link.
Right, that was the original link, but the new link, let me send you what that new link is going to look like.
Share circles with all your friends and family.
Right, share circles with all your friends and family, and this is going to be the podcast link.
Okay, and there is text on this image. It says discover trusted recommendations ad free. So that text is gonna be, where does that text get changed?
Go um, go on Slack and go to the last message I sent. That's good. This is gonna be the new preview. For a podcast.
Okay, let's see. Will there be any writing on the image like there is where, so where it says discover trusted recommendations ad free? Is there gonna be nothing there like that?
What are you looking at?
You have to text it, like it's, you know how it's different in Slack?
Okay, let me, yeah, let me text it to you.
Yeah.
Cause.
Even in your, in your compose window, you'll see.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna send you what the new one's gonna look like. It looks nothing. Nothing like that. Let me copy the link.
Okay, and while we're doing that, what's another link we can test, like a dynamic link? So, so a newer. Test we can run with Todd.
What do you mean a newer test?
Of our newer link features, you know, we had the deep links for a long time. They're a little bit limited, but we. Added more functionality with dynamic links. Um, and universal links, which ones would you say are confidently working to? Take someone directly to, let's say, our user profile or maybe a place profile or what do you think?
Yeah, we have, we have a link for place profile. I can send that to, that's what we've been doing for the funnel.
Yep, okay. What about, does that work on a movie or a show yet? Or person, what about a person's profile?
Yeah, should for a person too.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we know the one, actually, if you do it for a place. It will do the abbreviated onboarding, wouldn't it? And have the place in onboarding to favorite.
Yeah, if you did a place, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now, that link can only be generated by you at the moment, right? Or. Or anytime you says share outside circles, is that right?
I don't know if the app is doing it, it is creating those links when you share outside of the app right now.
Actually, no, I don't think we even have that option yet. So right now, the only way is if you created it.
Yeah, or we also have uh, or creates the links to.
Okay, let's do one for a person profile.
Okay, so.
And I got the text, it looks, that looks a lot better, so. That invite link works. And then we just need the message part of it.
I don't know when we changed that bottom bar to be that pink color, but I love it.
On which, where?
Like the native bottom bar on my uh Android turned pink, very cute.
Interesting. I don't know that we did that. On the native door?
Yeah.
On Android?
Oh, never mind. I see what happened. I just got really confused because it looks pink. It's the bottom of it. I'll show you, I'll, I'll put it in Slack so you can see what I'm looking at. Because I was like, oh, that's fun.
Jerry, um I fixed that issue with the link that it says undefined, well. I'm testing, when I was testing it, one, with one episode and of. Um, of that rad video, um, the episode ID was not. It's the um, it's the pinned episode. In the rad radio.
Don't do the pinned, don't do the pinned episode.
Oh, well, if someone tried to share that. The link will be undefined because I need the podcast.
I'll need to create a special ID for that, that pinned episode. That problem, I can create an ID for the pinned episode, but what? Let's check for like the ones that are not pinned right now.
Yeah, I checked the other one, it's fixed, it's um, the, the, the URL, it's correct, working. It's just that one.
Okay. Also, for those episodes we have pinned right now, are we ever gonna cycle those through?
Eventually, let's leave them for now.
Okay.
There's only two, right?
Correct.
Y'all, um, I got them in my memory bank. Okay, I mean, I'm sending you the text to go with the message for sharing a podcasts. I'm gonna send it in Slack here. And Jerry, you're gonna create a link to share a person's profile? Where else are we? There's a few things going on here.
Yeah, it is uh ready to deploy. He's doing final testing on the chat management feature. Um, sounds like he's ready to hand that off to Jerry to get into the app.
Okay, great.
By the way, after that, I'm switching him over to the Circle Store, the actual web store. We're gonna do a rebuild of that whole store. We, we rebuilt the entire backend of the reward store and the entire backend of our admin page, so. We're gonna do this too and just make, make it all compatible.
So we're talking about the Circle Store?
Yeah, the actual pro Circle Store proper, store dot circles dot com. We're gonna do a full rebuild of that. It's not good.
It needs help, it needs love.
Okay, right, right, okay. Good, so let's see. Todd, were you still in the middle of something with Jerry?
We were just uh, just links, but um. I don't think we're doing anything at the moment, right? Or are we? You're saying something about a profile link, though?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna get that link for you.
He's just sending a person.
I don't know, I want to make sure I do not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, I was saying, and it doesn't matter what phone it's sent to, this is regardless of circles being on the phone or not, we're just looking at a preview. And, and uh text, right?
Wait, what's, what's that you were like? Buttering out.
Oh, sorry, it doesn't matter what phone, whether or not circle, circles is, is installed or not to be, we're just looking at a preview. In our messages and in text messages.
Yes. I, I don't want this looked over today, but we still do not, I still don't have a pill, a plan for these emails that we're sending out tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Before I get deep on these links and all, I spent too much time. I want, I want the emails like finalized and ready to go.
Yeah, I want to talk about that, um. We have a couple of different ways we're doing this too. So we have our like tailored ones, like. A handful and then. Uh, more of a mass email and perhaps even a ma- a text. But um, let's talk, we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. Um, Chantel, did you already work on the copy for the email?
Yeah, and he said there are some tweaks he wanted to see first.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll take a look at that. Okay, so then. Feel like I had like three more questions, but I don't remember at the moment. Let's continue with um Wells update. Hey, Wells, how are you? Can we get an update?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm fine, I'm back and yeah, I have cool updates. So about the three PRs I opened before I left. Two of them are merged and one of them had a small comment from Amin. So I, I didn't change that. I changed implementation or something and then I basically changed it back to, to how it was now. And also, since uh there were new stuff in development, uh there were conflicts with this code that was not merged, so I did update it. And I, I did sync it with some changes that is made on the podcast and whatnot, so the PR is fully updated and ready to be. Uh, reviewed and ready to be merged.
Okay, good. Um, there were some seealls that weren't working. On the list of like movies and shows, so. I uh wanted to go over those with you real quicks.
Yeah, of course, hundred percent.
Let's see, so we have the two filters. We have check-ins and favorites.
Okay.
And um, looks like check-ins for shows works. Favorites. But then again, I'm also looking at the most popular. Let me scroll down to someone else's. Okay, checking his favorites working. Danny's. Okay, I think it was podcasts. Try, try podcasts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, trending on, I'm trending check-ins on podcasts was not working.
And neither is it on.
Yeah. On the other stuff, indeed, yeah. Let me see if we're favorites. Yeah, favorite, same thing, awesome. Something to work, we'll, we'll do right away.
Okay, yep, let's take a look at that. Um, let me make sure the other ones, let's see, books. Books is working. For favorites, or for check-ins, let's try favorites. Yep, um, also. I think actually games might not be, let me double check. Took a long time to load. Um, games gives me a white screen when I hits y'all on favorites.
Yeah, I do see that and, and for favorites, it, it, it doesn't bring me anything. And yeah, for, for check-ins, it's like. And, yeah, for, for check-ins, it's like one option. So they, there isn't that much data there, seems, we're looking to it also.
Okay, yeah, take a look at that. And then if you hit the check-in button on the nav bar and then go to entertainment.
Check in entertainment, okay.
It's a similar view, but none of those yalls are working also.
Oh. Yeah, indeed.
Address those one. Great, yeah, go ahead and that'll be your focus for.
Okay, yeah, um, the, this screen, it is a different screen, so I think none of them are working because I did not implement it on this screen yet.
Right.
Will do.
Okay, but hopefully it should be. Um, very similar to how you did before, so not too much learning curve on it, right?
Yes, sure, I think so.
Okay, good, and then what, tell me about the, the, um, outstanding. PRs you had, what, what was in them, I don't remember everything we were looking at.
Yeah, so let me just, hold them right here. So there were two PRs merged, um, four days ago, which is, um, some update on the analytics for the strict screen. Um, the strict screen viewed event was firing not, not that reliable and inconsistently. Because I, I, I was using an internal state management hook from React, but we saw that. Um, it, it can give some inconsistencies to render and that kind of stuff. So I changed how that is implemented completely, so we have a new way of handling this analytics for the strict screen viewed. So that should, um, um. Um, help in the completed dashboard to not have like duplicate events and that kind of thing regarding that event specifically. Also. Um, the other buttons, tapable area are way bigger on the podcast screen, so that one is merged. So the navigation there for both when you want to go back and also when you want to share something is, is way bigger, so we. Expanded area and the PR that is outstanding now, that is, uh, ready for review again, is the one that. Turns all the play buttons into pause buttons.
That's right, that was, when was that merged?
It was not merged yet, so.
Okay, what's left on that?
Uh, nothing, there, there was just a comment that I mean left on a PR regarding a change you did. On some internal management for the app. Uh, because he asked, why did I change a thing there if it was not working or something like that? And I mentioned it was not working, but since I added handling for. Error management inside of that screen, that, that part wouldn't be necessarily a problem. So I just kept it as it was, but now we have our management and, and, and all the, the handling that's necessary for that flow to work properly. So I did that and I updated the code with some latest changes from development, so synced it with some changes. That is made on the podcast, uh, episode screen. And now it is everything updated and ready to be reviewed and ready to be merged, so just need to be reviewed again.
Needs to be reviewed again, okay, did you have any questions for Amin on it?
Uh, nope, all good.
Okay, okay, so I mean, when you get a chance, will you review Wells PR?
Yes, sure.
Okay, and did you happen to check if that Lottie worked on Android?
Oh, yeah, it does work on Android, um, yeah, but not highly, so I don't know what's going on there, I'll, I'll look into it.
It, it, you don't have to look into it, it's, I've seen it before, it's how he makes it with After Effects. There's properties he needs to, I'll, I'll just, I'll let him know it works on Android.
Okay.
That'll help him narrow down. I'm just messaging. Okay, so, um, okay, so, okay, um, anything else, Wells?
Uh, no, sir, that's all.
Okay. All right. Then, um, keep me posted on how it goes with the see all stuff.
Sounds good, good.
Okay, great, all right, Jerry, did you, uh, have that link ready yet?
Oh, yeah, let me send that, get that, uh. Think I had it, I was waiting on something. Oh, it still hasn't deployed yet, there was a tweak I had to do to it, but it wasn't deployed, okay.
Oh, man, did you deploy the thing with the circle buddy?
Creating fully questions on just. Give me. I tested it.
Sounds good.
What is this a pull request for?
Circles Buddy default.
So there is, there's a script, uh, which, which will add, uh, Subcall's Buddy to existing user also. And they don't need to do onboard.
Hmm, okay, I see. Because I deployed, I deployed everything that we had in QA to production this morning.
Yeah, that's not required, like, uh, for the import also, it might, we need to run products, so let's give me, give me five minutes.
Jerry, does that include the location pane where it says, did you forget to check in?
No, I don't think that, we didn't want to, on that yet, right?
No. Yeah, um, I would like to utilize it, um, but obviously he's testing and stuff. Okay, so that's just in QA at the moment. Okay, Todd and, uh, Danny, Chantel, you guys. Get a notification about your location, like checking into a place. Just screenshot and note like what, where you were and like some details about how. Long it's been since you onboarded and things like that and, um. But most importantly, where you are when it triggers.
Okay.
I would like to, I'd like to use it, um. When people are. Uh, you know, visiting businesses and stuff.
Which version?
Should be in any future test versions.
Okay, so would I need to turn on the notification for place check-in? Or is that supposed to only be for other people?
That's for other people.
Okay. Got it. I've never seen it, so.
I only saw it once. I think you have to be at a geofenced area, is that right, Jerry?
You, you have to be, you, you have to be sharing your location, like. Set always and you also have to be near a. Place for like thirty minutes and you have to be in a QA build.
Interesting, I don't think I set mine location to always. I guess, could it also be if it's while using the app?
Yeah, or if you're in the app.
Got it.
Would, do we have any progress on that, uh, issue we were talking about yesterday with the? Um, text bouncing around with the like autocorrect and all that?
We're hoping it got fixed with the library update.
Oh, got it, okay.
Wasn't possible to really recreate it, so.
Yeah, I, I tried again last night for a little while and. It's so random, couldn't get, I couldn't get it to happen.
Yeah, I know. All right. Well, the email, so the emails. Should talk about that. Tomorrow, we got a lot going on, the private mode, the WeFunder campaign ends.
Are you guys going back on the radio?
Um, probably not, I'm out of town, Rob's been sick. Um, but maybe, I don't know, Danny might, depending, we'll have to talk to Rob today. I'd like to, like to, uh. Make as much noise as we can. We funders are gonna be supposed to send out an email, did, Danny, did we find or get back to you about sending out that email by tomorrow? Danny, are you there? Yeah, we're, uh, we're waiting on. Wefunder and. I guess we're still working on ours too, you said, uh, Danny had some changes for you, Chantel, maybe, maybe send it to me too, I want to see what that looks like. Did you get anywhere with the, um, email and program for awarding? Like an investor level two badge and level three badge?
One of the things that, uh, Jerry and I were talking about, and I also realized I should probably make a four X one.
Yeah.
Now we're on a four X, and then one of the things he was suggesting to is just putting on. Like a hint of some sort of how it is, but then I'm not really sure what to do for the ones you can't get anymore. I don't know if we should put like retired for those that. Had, uh, been only for Kickstarter people.
Ones that were one-time only special badge?
Yeah. Correct.
Um, I don't know. I mean, if you can't earn it, can't earn it, so. Well, I think we can leave it as is.
Yeah, and there's also the emails too, for, I want to send them a personalized email. Uh, from circles. After their investment completes and that's going to have their invitation to the investor chat. And, and there's a few scenarios of emails. You could be sending them depending on one, their investment level, two, whether or not they've already verified. Their investor relationship and they're like in the investor chat.
Okay.
So we, we need emails for all those scenarios.
Okay. Chantel, maybe we could work on those too?
Yeah.
Hey, Ismail, um. I had an error yesterday trying to play a video. And, uh, this is in the production version, it's in the App Store. Took a screenshot. I couldn't recreate it though, but it said, um. Video error, could not open video in full screen mode.
Yeah, I, I said, I posted it this weekend.
You saw it too, Jerry?
Yeah, I posted a video.
And does it happen all the time or?
It's like, double tap a video. If I like try to double tap a video to play it, it happened. And I also noticed that sometimes the video, the preview is rotated. From what the actual orientation of the video is, so maybe we're not looking at all the metadata there.
Hmm, I mean, I've never really worked with the metadata of the video, you might, like the library just kind of. For now, it's passing the URI. And it pretty much handles it.
Yeah, if you, on my video, I could try to bump my video, um, can I?
So does, does the video eventually play, John, like after you kind of?
Um, let's see, did I?
I can check what I just put.
Just play, yes, it's not like, it's not like a whole, like a blocker necessarily. Like, yeah, your only choice is to hit okay, and then you hit okay and then it like plays.
What did I just put in development channel, I bumped it, you'll see exactly what. The same thing. The image is rotated, so when the video plays, the video plays correct.
Oh, they just thought images rotated, you're saying?
Right, and I don't know if that's because that's a.
Um, well, remember that image we're getting it from Cloud Nary?
Well, actually, I'm trying to figure.
Well, well, wait, wait, wait a second.
The video ends.
Wait, wait a second, if, if you look at the end of the video, it rotates.
Right, I just realized that, so.
So maybe he's just taking a screenshot of that, end of the video.
End of the video, okay, that, that's probably what it is.
Yeah, but that's the image we get from Cloud Nervous, I think so, it, it looks like it's creating it from the end of the video.
Yeah, yep, yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, um, as far as that error, John, um, that's from the video player itself. It's not from, like, it's not a model that we have. And if it didn't play it, I don't know, maybe it didn't like something, so, does it happen often or? This is the first time running into it.
Uh, I have, don't play a lot of videos in chats, but let me try again.
Okay, and let's see if it does happen a lot, let's try to see if there's specific. Circumstances that cause it to behave like that. Oh, I think I know what it is. Oh, I know what it is.
What is it?
I'm clicking on a video, it takes a second to load. Like to open that model. So if you click on it twice. Or like as it's loading, if you click on it more than once. I think that model pops up.
Yeah, I just got it. Yeah, compress it twice.
Yeah, I want to see if I can speed that up, I thought it would just be slow on the emulator because I was running it on my computer, but it looks like it's even slow here. Like when you first click it, it should open it right away, I want to see if I can have it. Maybe open the model at least or something a little quicker, if it's just a loader.
Yeah, good call.
So, might need to work on that a little bit, this one, it got a little tricky because I remember on Android, it was like causing the app to crash. Because it was loading all the videos all at once, so. Uh, I had to kind of create, I had to like build around the library where. Like I had to build another model and I had to like have it load later and I have to make sure it closes and mounts. So there's a lot of stuff I needed to handle for I do not to crash and that's why. These stuff are happening where I have to like, oh, now I have to create a loader screen. Where the new app library that they're working on, the expo video library, it's still not out yet, it will handle all that for us. But in the meantime, in the meantime, until that, that library is ready, I kind of have to build on top of the old. Video library.
Okay. Well, see what we can do. You know, there is another minor little thing we talked about a while back. Since you're in the chat area, the system messages. Are gray text. In topics, but they should probably be the white text that we use for date stamp. I'll send you a screenshot when I'm talking about, because it.
Yeah, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, could you use one of that one?
Yeah, so you want it to match the date stamps inside topics?
Yeah.
So like the message and the date stamps inside topics are not the color, right?
What was that again?
The message, the system messages and the date stamps are not the same color in topics?
No, they're not.
And you want it to match date stamp color?
Yeah, because. On gray backgrounds that really, it's like really blended in.
Yeah, I can update that.
Okay, cool. Thank you, um. I had a very strange bug on the map. Few days ago. But I'll wait on this one. I'll probably, also, I mean, when you, when you're ready. But, um. I mean, I used to work on the, uh. The podcast early.
Oh, yeah, that's fixed, I fixed the link, also I changed the wording you sent me.
Okay, cool.
Um, yeah, right now I was like looking into, um, where's PR, reviewing it, um, right now talking with him about some.
Okay, great, when you're done with that. Um, let's look at this map situation I have, it might be good to, if you log in on my account to recreate it, because it's. It's really strange, it's like, uh. it's mixing up two locations. We might need Jerry's help, but like it's like if I tap on one of the map markers, it moves to another map marker of a business with the same name, but a different address. And, um, it doesn't do it on everybody, on all of them, just on this one particular pizza, pizza restaurant. It's, uh, I'll have to show you, but let me know when you're available. We'll take a look.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. And then Amit, did you finish running your script?
Uh, Jerry just pulled my pulled a question or anything.
Okay.
It's just a general question. Do we still have a quick ability to modify categories of businesses that got misclassified?
Yeah, I think Chantel has a dashboard where she can do that.
Is that inside of the new, um, front end that we have or Chantel, are you still using the old one for that?
Still using the old one for that?
Okay.
Yeah, when you see those, we let her know. I've come, I've come across a couple here and there.
Yeah, I found a bunch this morning. Um, I was actually just going to go in and fix them myself, uh, if there was an easy way to do it, but it's kind of looking for it. I don't, I just, I don't think we have it in the new system yet.
Mm hmm. Yeah, let's get those cleaned up. I remember seeing like a Costco was showing as a pizza place.
Yeah, it's mostly, I was doing tech support. Uh, I was looking for, um, I, I thought it'd be a good idea to do something for tech to you on, on the, on the website, on tech to you dot com about like, you know, the number one most favorited location on circles with a shortcut to the, uh, app download or circles dot com or something like that. I think it'd be a good like little badge for us to throw on our homepage somewhere. And I was just going through tech support just to make sure that I wasn't missing something and like Best Buy surpassed us or something like that, which of course they haven't. But, um, yeah, I found a lot of tech support that was not related. Or things that were listed as tech support anyway that weren't related.
Yeah, yeah, let's get that cleaned up. I think even one of our tech C locations has a weird category assigned to it. I can't remember which location, but it has something like, um, advertising.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Which we do digital ads. Well, we were, we're not even really doing that anymore.
No, I must just focus on web design now.
Yeah, we can be definitely in like that category can be fixed.
Yeah, motor rewinding is under tech support. I don't, I'm assuming that just individuals clicked these because he also chose like electrician and generator slash installation slash repair. That's crazy. We have a category for generator installation and repair.
Yeah. Well, we need it, we need it.
Yeah, there's a lot. Uh, Jerry, it looks like you pushed, uh, live the final version that AOD was doing testing. So you guys are good to integrate into the app whenever you want on, on dev at least so that we could start doing some testing of the chat management features.
Cool.
It's pretty rudimentary. I mean, it, it basically what it's doing right now is showing a list of all the members in the, uh, in the chat. So like take Maggot Army, for example, we paginate the entire member list, you know, so there's not 10,000 people loading on a page. You can do a live search on the top. So you can just start typing in a name, tap on it, and then we have all of our, um, restrictions for the users that show up there. If a user is like removed or silenced or whatever, they still do show up in the list of users. Um, and then we have the ability to un, undo those things if, if we like silenced somebody or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. We left off last week with an invite link. If you were tagged in a check in. And we didn't go further because we, we just, we wanted to think it through like how Twilio make treat an external user. I would like to, uh, pursue this. I was talking to Tori about it. She's like, I would definitely use that. I've thought about using it. And if other people use it, it's tremendously powerful network effect. Because you could tag your friend in a checking, even if they're not in the circle app, and they'll still get notified. So where did we leave off on that, Jerry?
That, uh, talking about tagging external users and check-ins?
Yeah.
That we need to work with app side and make sure that they can get the list to send to. And then we need to update from the backend the mutation to support user contact keys and share.
Right. You reminded me the list is step one, and I never got a chance to get with Amin on that. Um, you have the list, like the query is there, right? He just needs to know the right one. I think it's the one under edit SOT.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. So actually, I mean, when you're done, we'll forget about the map for now, but we'll have a different task I want to go over with you. And so then, so then the front end will have the list, Jerry. Then what do we got to do?
The backend needs to support user contact keys or tags.
Okay.
Need to update any queries. Oh, that's what we, that's what we were going to also determine the final wording on the, the card. Because we could have it show the, the contact name for whoever that person is, but that might be weird because some people don't put like their contact names as that person's name. We were floating around some things like we'd call it a non-circles user. We call them a square. We never, we never finalized on what we wanted. The cards to say when you're tagging somebody in a check-in.
Hmm, um, here, let me send you the screen that we made. Chantel had made this in Figma. So this one would be.
Well, that's the ticket. That's the invite link.
Yeah. So when you say the card, there's the card in the chat?
Well, uh, the, well, it chat and also the like discover feed and stuff.
Yeah, okay. Um, I don't think we do in, in the discover feed.
Okay. Well, the user feed, like you can tell when somebody checks in with somebody.
Yeah, on the activity feed, if I check in and tag, it would, yeah, it would have the name of the person I tagged based on the name of my contacts.
You want it to, you want it to show the name of the contacts? So that that's
Yeah.
Final decision?
Yeah.
Like pookie heart, heart kissy face eggplant?
Yeah, because then they could always download the app and change your name.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, then the card on the, in the chat also, I guess, right?
Yeah.
And then we didn't determine how to handle it if it was a one-on-one versus.
Yeah, so, uh, we can show it in the activity feed, but I don't think we're going to create a chat group if if it's one person you're tagging, that's an external user.
Okay. That we would, you wouldn't show it in the.
And well, we can't show it in the activity feed, but we just won't create a chat. We can send them a message from Twilio. But we won't.
Yeah, we just send the message from Twilio with the, the download link, right?
Right. But we, we won't create a chat in circles for just the one-on-one external chat.
Okay. And, and then, but if they just tagged another external user or internal user, then it creates a group.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have to set anything up, configure anything for that to take place?
Um, Amit could take the first shot at it.
Okay. But is there still configuration that has to be done?
I mean, from the backend.
On the backend?
Yeah.
Okay. So Amit, um, would you know how to configure from the backend to accomplish this?
Uh, what I had to configure, sorry, John, I was running that script. Sorry.
We need to be able to tag external users and check-ins.
Okay.
Does it, does he need to know that there's a difference between a one-on-one, Jerry?
Uh, yeah. So even if it's a one-on-one, so how we're creating a group, will we do a check-in with multiple people or we check in with one person? If we only tag one user and that user is external, we need to skip creating the group.
Okay.
And, but if we tag more than one person, we can create the group. And then after we send, after we do that, we want to send a message from Twilio to the, the external contact with an invite link.
Okay, got it.
Okay. And I sent you a visual just to see, just so you get an idea of like what the ticket's going to look like. But obviously, the, the real real work is under the hood there with the backend configuration.
Yeah, we, yeah. Once we get the backend started, I can, uh, plug in the ticket.
Okay. You can still use, reuse a lot of the elements that we did the other day, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it's just, you know, kind of when we start making those very small A B tests.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
This one, I don't think we need an A B test. I think this one, this one's gold. We just, it's got such a call to action. You know, you're attacking a check-in. I think we just go with this. And, um, we can, we can start it whenever it's ready, right? Because it won't, or will it, would it interfere with the other A B test?
No.
No? Okay, perfect.
Let me, let me think about this. Ooh, it could. It could right now, but I'd have to work on. I have to work on something like, we have to work on some proper funnel for this.
Hmm.
And yeah.
And then where will it link them at the end of this? We, the conversation would be the ideal. Like not even, not beyond that, the topic in the conversation. So if I shared, um, I tagged you in a check-in for a movie. After you download the app, you end up in the topic for that movie.
Well, you have to onboard.
Yeah.
You have to onboard and after you onboard, you would see this message in your lobby. But we don't have anything that would redirect you immediately after.
That's true. You would see it in the lobby. Okay, what if I had the app on my phone? Can it direct me into the topic?
What do you mean if I had the app on my phone?
So I tag a user in a check-in. They already have the app on their phone.
The SMS.
Well, maybe they have notifications off?
We well, they, see, that's weird. Like I, I don't know. That, that could be, that could be spammy in a way. Because they have the app and they turn, I know we're doing it already. We just, I want to tread lightly in some, some ways.
Yeah, I think we're doing it so lightly that it doesn't really ever happen.
Hmm.
It's so rare.
Yeah. We, if we just start sending them SMSs when they turn notifications off. I mean, they don't want to get notified from circles. We're just circumventing it in a way.
Right. But only if the user opts into it. You know, we'll have to, we have it in our terms and conditions.
Hmm.
And they can still opt out to from those.
Correct.
So that's just the hypothetical anyway. What about another situation where? Um, I got a push notification. Would it open me to the topic?
Uh, almost sounds like that does already. If not, it can be improved.
Yeah, that would be part of our dynamic links, right?
Well, that would be the push, that'd be the, the push notification for the, uh, push notification for the tag.
Yeah.
That should be functional already.
Okay. Do you have, do you need any configuration on it? Or how do you know if it doesn't?
It'd already be configured. So if I go and I do a check-in. And then I tap here, tag friends.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We were testing that the other day. Uh, I think it takes you to the main chat, but not the topic. But, but confirm for me.
E, well, I'm sick.
Is there something? Amit, are you running a script right now?
Yes, I'm running this. What is happening?
QA is very slow right now.
Yeah, I'm running this script.
Could you make sure that that link, when you get tagged in a check-in, that goes to the topic and not just the thread? When you're, when you're done with that script, because it's, uh, I'm not able to really do anything in QA right now.
I'm sorry, Jerry, you're not talking to me?
Yeah. Can you make sure whenever you tag somebody in a chat and you get a push notification? Make sure that that goes to the topic in the chat and not the main chat.
Okay. So I will work on this part tomorrow, Jerry. Not now. So Twill will call already.
Yeah, that's fine. You're talking about the, uh, chat related stuff?
Yeah, so, yeah, just like the push notification.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will react to that topic. I will.
Okay, so you, you weren't able to test, Jerry, if the push notification takes you into the topic?
No, QA is being unresponsive because of its.
Let me stop it.
Don't, don't, don't stop because you have to run it again after.
Okay.
Just add it, add it to your list to check home things for tomorrow, please.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I still need my game plan for these notifications tomorrow. I need to know what time I'm sending it, who I'm sending it to. I know Chantel's finalizing the content. But maybe we can get that current draft set up in one signal. Like I, I need to know what we have. So tomorrow morning, I, I can run these at, at the time.
Yep. Yep, I know.
Emails.
Still a couple of things in the air right now. Waiting here back for Weefunder on one and waiting here back for Rob on another thing. So, um, yeah, let me, uh.
I want to work with Danny or whoever else is working on, uh, getting the influencer links. I want to make sure that we have the proper UTM tracking. So we can tell exactly where our traffic is sourcing from.
Definitely.
On all that ready today. So that's why I'm, uh, told Danny this morning, I don't want to take up a lot of dev time today. I want to make sure we have all of our funnels ready for tracking our campaign tomorrow.
Yeah, I think we're ready to shift gears. Um, when you said influencer links, what, which ones are top?
All pages, like I want a different link for each page.
Hmm.
See, and track in our funnel, you know, where is our traffic coming?
Right, yeah. Okay. Okay, Danny's on a call. Um, let's, uh, give him a few minutes. Amit, when you're done with the script, let me know. And then let's have Amin take a look at this. What was that, Amit?
It's, they're still running. It's running in batches of hundred.
Okay.
So it will take time.
Okay. We could probably run that overnight next time.
Yes. Yes, yes, yeah. On broad, I will not return overnight, not on that.
Okay.
And uh, I. What are, are we doing a store build today or do we still have stuff we need to do? Because I really think we should get those like discover groups. At least that those groups.
I'd like to. Um, they need a little style change. But yeah, I mean, that is the goal today is to get the store build. I mean, even if we get it today, it still has to be approved by both stores.
Um, Apple's been quick.
Apple's quick when we put a rush on it. I don't know how many times we can do that. And then Google Play, you just never know with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so. Um. Give me about five minutes and then. I'll be back and we'll we'll start on that. And um, I wanna have uh, also have a mean, take a look at those the styling on those group topics. They're close. I think they're, I think it's pretty good, but um. I still, I think they need some person a little bit. We didn't really those all the way last week, did we, Jerry?
We didn't what?
Test them all the way. I remember you had you had thrown a few, a few in kind of automatically. But um.
I don't know what to test, but.
Um. Well, they have to remove. We don't want duplicates.
Right, yeah, they are doing that.
The thing they have the the one, the testing. To make sure there's no duplicates, that's not as easy because. They're in production, the ones we want to uh. To have selectable.
What about the ones we have selectable again?
Well, we have ones in production that are different than the ones in QA.
Hmm.
The ones in QA, I think. I think you picked ones that were already in the lobby, right? So they were by nature duplicated.
No, no, I I picked, I picked some. It depends on who you are. Like some users weren't part of those groups.
Okay, well, let's think about how to make sure we test it as rigorously as we can. And um. Yeah, I'll I'll be back in a few minutes. I'll be back and go on more lunch.
I just hung up that call.
John and Jerry both stepped away.
Okay. I'll go up and read the captions. I saw my name a couple times.
Uh, yeah, John had a question. I they they were kind of waiting for you.
It was prob- one of them was probably about Weefunder and the email. And I know that I am, but I just sent them another text and email cuz they're slow.
Yeah, I think another thing was the um.
The link.
Jerry, yeah, Jerry just wants to get the individual. He wants to get individual links tracked for everything that we're gonna be sending out.
Okay, I've got our uh, Instagram bio looking perfect for the conversion funnel to take place. You can't put a link in the caption. Of the major pages profile, but we do have some good caption options and then it'll link to at circles app and it'll say Lincoln, Lincoln circles bio.
Nice.
And the bio says circles dot com slash invest. It looks nice and clean. We've got eighteen hours till kickoff.
Is it confirmed?
Yeah.
Nice.
Uh, but I want the Weefunder able to go all at the same time and I'm concerned that they're gonna drag their feet and give me. Weefunder does this thing where they're like, oh, yeah, we, you know, we schedule these in advance and blah, blah, blah. But we told them yesterday, we wanted it to be timed at the launch of the campaign.
Yeah.
Um. And then those personal emails. Chantal, how many investors are there that are over the, let's say, twenty-five hundred mark?
Twenty-five hundred?
Is it a lot?
Yeah.
What about five thousand?
Give me, we just created a new source of truth um, yesterday. So give me one sec. Since I have in my sort, my current source of truth document of everything is everyone from. Twenty-twenty to yesterday. One sec. But I have one from before this. Let's see, uh. Two. Okay, so over five thousand. Three hundred and thirty-five, five thousand plus.
Is what they'd really love to see Weefunder is us reach out with personal email, like do a little bit of research on everyone and and really personalize the email. Um, what about ten plus?
Ninety-one?
Okay, interesting. That's a big drop off. It's much more doable.
What about a million plus?
Uh, none so far.
One day.
I don't think that the platform would allow it. Maybe though.
I have had such a dramatic inquiry and spam and scam calls all day. For the past like two days. It's like way significantly higher.
I ended up having to get a whole new phone number from AT&amp;T for the same reason.
Really?
Yeah.